Okay, just let me know and then I'll get started.
Angie, just an FYI, I'm not seeing Lee Lenzmeyer yet. But we are live.
Okay, all right. I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. My name's Angie Berg. I'm the environmental, one of the environmental services supervisors at Environmental Services. We are happy to have everybody with us tonight to join us for our sixth ordinance review committee consisting of the county commissioners and county planning commission. We also have some guests tonight from property services. I'll ask them to introduce themselves here after we do roll call. And also, we have some environmental services staff with us tonight. You're familiar with Heidi Winstelski, Jennifer Buckantine, and Shelley Benson, our director. So we'll go ahead and get started with roll call. Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Persky?
Here.
Mr. Mergan?
Here.
Mr. Lenzmeyer, maybe you'll join in a little bit. Commissioner Natch?
Yep.
All right, and moving on to Planning Commission District One.
Jason Wienerman here.
District Two.
Sean Blackburn here.
District Three.
Jason Cron here.
District Four.
Ken Mossman here.
District Five.
Mike Crowell here.
And our two at-large members, please.
Rich Blankish here, at large.
Jeff Bertram here.
Good, thank you, everybody. Again, I'm just start with Jeff Johnson. Jeff, if you wanna introduce, unmute yourself and introduce yourself for the group tonight. I think everybody knows you are for the public. That would be helpful.
Thank you, Angie. Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director. Good evening.
All right, next we'll go on to Chad Martini. Chad?
Hi, my name is Chad Martini, as Angie said, and I am the Land Services Manager, working with Jeff Johnson in Property Services.
And last but certainly not least, many of you probably haven't met our new county surveyor. He's not new anymore, but with COVID, things are weird. So Ryan Henin.
Thanks, Angie. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm Ryan Henin. I work with Chad Martini in Land Services, and I am, yep, the county surveyor.
Good, thanks, everybody. And the reason we invited Chad, Ryan, and Jeff with us tonight is our first topic is going to be related to plating. And we've, we've met as an internal group, but also wanted them to be here tonight to hear the conversation and help answer any questions that you might have. So we'll go ahead and get started with our sixth meeting of the ordinance review. Again, tonight, we're talking about plating, mining, and some miscellaneous changes. So as per our normal conversations in the past, we'll just move through the slides and take pauses for conversation and discussion. Again, tonight, our goal is to review the recommendations and provide input to the commissioners on some recommended changes to our zoning ordinance. We're here to implement the comprehensive plan, SHAPE-STERNS, which many of you were a part of for the last well, 18 months. And now we're, we're looking at implementing that comprehensive plan by making some zoning and subdivision ordinance changes. So we're gonna talk about that tonight. Our next meeting, which could very potentially be our last meeting, is currently scheduled for April 26. And at that time, we plan on furthering our discussion on recreational vehicles, and then also having a discussion on recreational vehicle parks. So Jennifer and I will be working on getting that packet of information to you a couple of weeks prior to that meeting. Again, we're looking at some very specific policy areas and implementation for a comprehensive plan by looking at the mining and the subdivision ordinance changes. So unless there's any questions on the agenda, we'll go ahead and just dive right into our subdivision ordinance discussion. Okay, so again, we have our five pillars. We have agricultural, living, nature, business, and connectivity. And in looking through the subdivision ordinance changes, you really look at a lot of the pillars tying together. There's not a specific pillar that ties into subdivision, but one of the pillars and policy statements I think you could look at would be, you know, continue to provide opportunities for local jurisdictions to review proposed projects. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that when we talk about some options for township involvement. So specifically relating to plating, most of the time when we see plaques, it's for subdivisions for residential property, so that hits our living pillar. And, and working again to collaborating with cities and townships, managing growth. What we're proposing tonight, we do believe, you know, and we, meaning the, the land departments of the county, believe we are still going to be able to meet the goals and objectives of, of our comprehensive plan with a shift in some of the requirements. This is our, a little excerpt of our subdivision ordinance. I don't intend on reading it, nor can you probably read it. It's very small, but really, the, the purpose of the subdivision ordinance is to regulate the subdivision of land. Orderly development, protect the natural beauty. We talk about wide range of things in our goals and objectives. So again, you can keep that in mind when we're looking at the overall discussion about controlled development in the county. One other thing I'd like to just hit on, that I know many of you know, but if there's any public listening, we have to try to remember that subdivision is, is how the land is divided and zoning is how the land is used. So we're talking right now about the plating, so how it's divided, what's the mechanism, does should the county have for dividing land? So for some of us who've been here for a while, the history of plating in the county was from the first ever subdivision ordinance in Stearns County, or the first ever ordinance, rather, in Stearns County was subject, was ordinance number one. And it was the subdivision ordinance enacted in 1972. And that ordinance for plating stayed in place for decades. And it wasn't until 2002 that the one-time split went away. And a lot of us know what that meant. We don't need to get into it a lot, but really what it meant is if you had 40 acres of land, you could split it once without having to plat. Anytime after that, you had to plat. So that's, that was consistent. And then in 2000, we enacted the county-wide zoning ordinance, which caused us to have to relook at the subdivision ordinance. So then for about 15 years, we required plating on anything less than 40 acres. Then in, in 2016, we, we reevaluated that. Many of you were on that committee, or you were on the Planning Commissioner of the County Board at that time. And that number dropped basically from 40 to 20, okay? What is in front of you tonight is the current proposal is to change that once again and reduce that requirement to 10 acres if the property is located in an agricultural district. So that's would be the first time our subdivision ordinance really crosses into zoning. But we're confident we're, we would be able to, to manage that, and we think that would be an idea for the group to consider. So before I go on to the next slide, which is going to compare, what do you get with a plat and what do you get with administrative subdivision? Are there any questions or comments?
Hey, Angie, Jason Cron, just curious, what's driving the recommendation at this point to go from 20 down to 10, based on what you are seeing?
Yeah, sure. Good question, Jason. I should have given some background on that. So before, before COVID, last winter, early fall, there was some discussion amongst some local surveyors and some county commissioners, our county administrator, related to plating and are we, are we too restrictive? Should we look at loosening things? And so what Mike Williams and Shelley Benson and I and some of our county commissioners, Natch and Persky, met with a couple of surveyors and kind of, and Ryan Henin, sorry, Ryan, give you credit, met, and we went through all of these tick list of issues that they had. The, this is one, right? So some local private surveyors believe that we could still accomplish the goals of orderly development by reducing this. And then the other idea that we're talking about tonight is related to township involvement, and that too stemmed from those towns, or those surveyor meetings.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And the thought being that for the, from the surveying perspective, things would be much more organized and there'd be more involvement by shrinking that down to a, a smaller plat, organization going forward. Just kinda curious what the surveyor's thoughts were on that collectively.
Sure. So the thought was basically simplify the process. You know, a lot of us from, in the, in the land departments here, just automatically know that a plat is more complicated. And actually, that's kind of the segue that goes into the next slide, and you probably saw this in your review packet, but on the left, you know, this, or the middle column, rather, the plating column, those are things you have to do every time you plat, regardless of the lot size, the zoning district. And I think there's some thought that that is maybe just too complicated, and it takes too long. I think that's probably the number one complaint from surveyors is plating takes too long. And we're we work a lot on that. We, we strive to streamline that process. We have a lot of meetings to discuss how we can improve that, but as we'll talk about later with townships having an involvement, that also lengthens the process. So what this slide represents is, is again, what you get with plating is everything in the middle column. So you get your your wetland review, stormwater plan if it's required, water test, title commitment, road dedication, subject sites, building site availability, and then you enter into the subdivision agreement. So, and, and what you get, if you will, with administrative subdivision is you still get the wetland review. So anytime a lot is split in the county, we review with wetland staff to make sure that there is going to be access not affecting wetland, or the building site is going to be buildable for the intended purpose. So you're still gonna get wetlands. We're still gonna do septic site review. That's required by state rule. And we're still gonna look at building site suitability. So if someone wants to split off 15 acres and build a house on it, we're still gonna make sure that it's buildable with all of the restrictions. So that's really the, kind of the comparison when we, when we went through this. What you, you know, what you don't get is is what's not listed, one of the things being road dedication. And we talked with, I had talked with Jody Tighe years ago in 2016, when we went down from 40 to 20, and how, how important is that for the county to get dedication on some of these parcels? And and I think the answer is it's more important to get them on road dedication on newly created roads and not perhaps road dedication along existing county roads. So there's not a concern with that.
Angie, Commissioner Persky here. So if, if we go down to this 10-acre requirement, what does that do for development credits on agricultural properties?
Right, so again, the development credits would be stemming from the zoning ordinance. And so if you had, for example, in St. Wendell Township where you see a lot of rezonings to R10, and they wanna do their 10, or 10-acre lots, that would still have to be platted because that's residential. But let's say you have a, a property owner who has 160 acres and they have a farm on that property, and now they wanna subdivide off 15 acres for somebody to build. Under this proposed scenario, they would be able to do that administratively. And we would track to make sure that the other 25 acres is set aside. So regardless of the, the mechanism of subdividing, plating, or administrative, we're ensuring that there's land set aside and they're not using too many of their building entitlements. Does that make sense?
So you're saying the building entitlements would still remain at ag 40? And so if they were, let's say they had that 160, they could take one of those 40s and split it up into three, at least three other parcels, and then that would take up for the 160, but they would be able to develop on those parcels?
Right, so on 140, on 160 acres, zone A40, you have four building entitlements. And so if how they would subdivide, if they do it via plat, or they do it via administrative subdivision, would depend on how many acres they're proposing to sell. So just, just think of this as being, what kind of application do they need to submit to the county? It's either a plat, or it's administrative subdivision. The building entitlements is no more under administrative subdivision as it is under the plating scenario. Just a quick note, Deb, if you're listening, I have a text from Commissioner Natch that his internet is down. I don't think we've lost anybody else, but you can maybe queue me in if we need to regroup. But otherwise, I think Commissioner Natch has dropped off due to some internet concerns. Okay, Commissioner Persky or others, is that, does that answer your question before we move on to the next slide?
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Yeah, good to hear, Angie. Thank you.
Okay, good. So moving on, a county comparison, you know, I did a bunch of comparisons, and it's, it's like comparing apples and oranges. But, but we would have the same standard as Benton. A lot of counties have different standards based on the zoning district, so I do think that, that makes some sense for us to consider. Again, we did talk to land management, the recorder, recording service. We are all on board with what this would mean. And again, believe we would still be able to meet the goals and objectives of subdivision ordinance and the plating requirements. Lastly, I would just like to say that I did speak to many of the business partners that we have, attorneys, title companies, lenders, and one of the things that you probably saw on the previous side with plating that, that we get is a title commitment. Which basically, you know, are there any issues or underlying easements or mortgages that need to be dealt with? And in talking to, you know, many real estate attorneys that do the majority of the work in Stearns County, they're really not all that concerned about not getting it in an administrative subdivision because 99.9% of the time, in this day and age, it's getting done anyway. And in some cases, it's getting done twice. Under the plating scenario, the county's requirement, requiring it, and then it's maybe getting updated later, or if it's not sold for a few years later, then the mortgage company's requiring it. So it's still a good, it's still a really good idea for, for subdivisions, for plaques, because you don't wanna divide up problems, right? But this would just be one, one lot. And again, those problems or perceived problems in a title commitment would get addressed almost all of the time. And none of the title companies and attorneys that I talked to saw any concern with, with this idea. So I thought that was important to note as well. Okay, so basically, I'd like to have a bit of conversation on this idea before we move on to the township requirements or the township involvement. Do you, do you support the idea of reducing it, the requirement? Do you have other ideas or questions? Any other thoughts?
Angie, this is Sean. I like the idea. I, I think it's gonna, gonna have a positive impact on streamlining and, and trimming. So it will make things a little easier and quicker to deal with.
Angie, Jason Cron, I echo Sean's comments completely.
Angie, Commissioner Persky, I'm just wondering about some unintended consequences. Is, is this gonna maybe perpetuate some sprawl into western Stearns County where we may not necessarily wanna see it? Where we'll see residential development, or I shouldn't, it won't necessarily, well, you'll see these R10s in area that are primarily ag. And which then, we've then are looking at conflicts between residential dwellers and farmers. Is, is that a possibility?
So Commissioner Persky, related to that, if, if you keep in mind that the zoning district is going to stay the same. So the zoning is not going to change. So on your 160-acre example that, that I gave you, that zone A40, if they do that subdivision of 15 acres administratively, that zoning district, that zone, underlying zoning does not change. So this, this subdivision ordinance proposal would not perpetuate development in, in the ag areas. It, it's still development density is still dictated by the underlying zoning, which is the zoning aspect, not the subdivision.
Okay, good. And then as far as the road fee is concerned too, you know, when you start putting more folks onto a less developed road, their demand for improvements there, you know, are, are, you know, recognized. You know, if you go from having three people on, on a particular gravel road, that might be one thing, but then all of a sudden you got a dozen, and now they're looking for improvements. So my question would be, does that put a burden on the townships then for making improvements which they would otherwise not be having to do? And then they've gotta pull their resources away from those other residents that were there prior to the new folks. And so therefore, the fees and development, you know, do affect the townships. Maybe not the county so much, but might affect the township as far as their resource.
So in terms of, of a new road, we, we would al- almost never see a new road. We wouldn't be able to see a new road be created through an administrative subdivision, because you're not allowed to plat a right-of-way in an administrative subdivision. So these scenarios that we're suggesting would be along an existing township road. And so those properties would be required to follow what the township might have for spacing guidelines, over dimension with driveway top, those sorts of things. So township still, and we're kinda gonna roll into that next, town, townships will still have an opportunity to be involved in administrative subdivision process and in plating processes if they want. I don't see I don't see your concern as being something that would that would happen under this, under this minor change from 20 to 10.
Angie, if I can chime in, the other thing too is you're gonna increase their tax base in that township, you know, which obviously is gonna increase the amount of funds they have available to over time.
Good comments, everyone. So far, I have Sean and Jason Cron saying thumbs up on a proposed change. If that's the general, if that's the only conversation we're gonna have, then that will be the direction that we present at the public hearing for the commissioners on April 20. So last call on any discussion related to plating.
I did a thumbs up. I was trying to find on Zoom. I know where to, to do, you know, the, the little things, because we can't see everybody. It's hard.
Jeff, Mergan, I would agree also.
Jason Wienerman, I would concur as well. It sounds like a good idea.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I, I hear, I hear concurring opinions on that. So we'll move on to the next topic and that's of plating related to the township requirement. So I'm not going to bore you with the details, but there is a law that says that the townships that have planning and zoning authority are required to sign a plat. So, so let's just, let's just assume now, under this scenario that we're talking about, that it's been determined that property has to be platted under whatever scenario it is. It's residential or it's under 10 acres, it has to be platted under the ordinance. So what this, what this is saying currently under state law, if a township has a planning and zoning authority, they're required to be involved in plating. Okay, so if, if the private surveyors were on this call, and they're not, but they could testify at the hearing, they would say that, that townships sometimes complicate the plating process by lengthening the time it takes to, to plat. And that's not township's fault, right? They only meet once a month, most of the time. So a month becomes two, becomes three, depending on how many meetings you have to go to. So what the county ordinance has always required is township approval. Regardless if you have planning and zoning. So as you'll see on the slide, we have, we have 27 of our townships have adopted zoning. So 27 of our townships, if it's determined that a plat needs to be done, have to be involved in that plating process. They don't have a choice. Um, we, if the county were to change our subdivision ordinance to allow townships to opt out of approving plats when they don't want to, we would have seven townships that could consider doing it if they wanted to. Um, so I don't, I, I'll, I'm not going to stand here and say that we're going to fix all the private surveyor's concerns about township involvement because we still have 27 townships that by law need to be involved. Um, but this option will present, would help seven townships, um, most of which are in the under, underpopulated areas, not where we see a lot of development. So it isn't going to reach a far reaching um effects, if you will. So what we, what we're also doing, and Ryan and Chad and others from their group have been helping. Heidi started this process a few years back where we've been connecting with townships and trying to help them understand, you know, well, what is plating and when are your meetings? You know, is it the second Tuesday of the month and do you meet the second and the fourth? And is your planning commissioner review it? And it's very complicated when a landowner comes in and wants to plat and they don't know when and how and who. So we're going through and creating a resolution with each township, basically documenting their process. And saying, okay, if you're one of those townships that has to be involved in plating, can you at least tell us what your process is so we can help explain that to landowners and to surveyors? So we can help their, help property owners and developers' expectations on how long a plat might take. So what we've, what we've found is the number of meetings to get a plat approved in a township varies from one to four. And that four can mean a lot of times four months, sometimes it means two, but it always means more time. And so what we're trying to do is not reduce the number of meetings unless that's township, you know, their desire, but just talking to them about some of the options. So we currently have, let's see, we have 13 of our townships complete with this documentation. And, and we're going to continue that regardless of what happens tonight. In our governmental communication with our townships, working on documentation, working on helping them understand. But if the county board did change the ordinance, we could have potentially have seven townships say, yeah, we're good. We don't want anything to do with plating and we're going to opt out. And so that would be the other option for, for you to consider tonight. And it looks like I didn't put a lead in slide in, so I'm going to go back to this one. And pause, if there's any questions. The proposal again, related to the township involvement would be, for the seven townships that aren't required to have that approval, would you want to allow them to opt out if they so chose? That's really the question.
Angie, Sean here, uh, yeah, I like that idea. Again, just kind of trim the roster and streamline in the process.
Angie, Jason Wienerman, I would agree with Sean. You know, if they don't want to participate in the process, um, and they can opt out, will make it easier for folks to do things. Um, you know, we're not forcing anybody to do anything. If they want to participate, they can. So um, it's nice to give them the option to do what they want to do as locals.
Jason Cron agrees with the previous statements.
Jeff Mergen, I agree.
Carol Clark, same.
Commissioner Persky, sounds good.
Angie, Jeff Bertram, uh, I didn't say anything the first time because I was afraid the minute I say what I thought, it would go the other way. So I agreed with the first process of this. The second part, the only thing that you might want to just keep in mind is one, as we all know, township boards are time driven. A township board today is going to be different than one, five years from now. Do they have the potential to opt out now? Can they say, no, we do want to be, we do want it signed off here?
Yes, certainly. Thanks Jeff for that comment as well. And the way that we would write the ordinance is that we, a township could have an opt out, but they could definitely opt back in at any time. And I would envision that as being a resolution that the town board would sign opting out. And then at any time, they would be able to opt back in. So the ordinance would not, it wouldn't be just a one time, you're opt out and then you can never get back in. Yeah, good question.
Got it, that, that would be important. And then the other thing is obviously, we've, I think most of us, well, I know most of us agree that local government's the best in having their input and involvement. We've tried hard in the comprehensive plan to involve them. To date, we really haven't had a lot of interaction with townships on our comprehensive plan process that we were hoping to spur some conversations. We really haven't gotten anything. So that would be my only concern is that, um, God bless surveyors, uh, attorneys, mortgage lenders. First things, it's the landowner in the township, uh, fast growth isn't always good growth. So um, if somebody really wants to build a house, um, I don't think that they expect that they can do that in two weeks. Um, well, I certainly have heard about a lot more questions and concerns about the county process than I have about any township process. So I'm not opposed to trying it, but um, this isn't a solve all, in my opinion, of um, again, quick growth for whom? That would be the only concern is um, if I'm a landowner, if it's a township that is going to approve it, I might receive a notice that I may not recognize or again, maybe my fault, but see when it's on the county level versus on the township level. But I'm not opposed to trying it, but um, we'll have to be flexible to do something different if problems are created, I guess.
Angie Rich here. See, I got a question in regards to, has the county identified where the prime aggregate is located in the county? I'm just reading the natural resource extraction um item that's in our handout here. And one, it makes a statement in here, premature development of homes and business has limited the extraction of the resources. And I'm just thinking, does the county have specific areas identified as prime aggregate for construction uses? Would that have an impact on what we're talking about right now? In regards to uh making 10 acres available or 15 acres available in a rural setting?
Sure, yeah, that's a good question, uh, Richard. So the answer is yes and no. So no, it won't if, by, by what we're talking about tonight with the opt out provision for townships and changing plating to administrative subdivision, that will not change the, the impact to the aggregate resource. Okay, now, does Stearns County want to take that aggregate resource map that we do have from the DNR? And do we want to take that to the next level and require the aggregate to be used first, before it's developed? Um, those would be, those would be separate conversations, I think, that we would want to have with the planning commissioner and county board. Um, counties closer to the metro area that obviously have a little more growth pressure and pressure on their aggregate, they, they've done that. We, we don't have that in the ordinance currently under the zoning ordinance. But what you're looking at tonight would not affect that because that one lot plat or that one subdivision administratively would be allowed currently either way, under either scenario.
Is that information shared with the townships so that they are aware that, you know, they may be sitting on valuable land in regards to potential mining operations or extraction, as they put it in this statement? I mean, is that information shared freely with the townships?
So originally it was when the DNR did, the Department of Natural Resources did the aggregate survey and actually we're one of a hand, well, maybe 10 counties or 20 by now statewide that actually has that aggregate resource map. Um, I've done some presentations at the legislature and various committees on, on what do we do to protect the resource? And what does our ordinance say, um, you know, things like that. So we have shared it with townships. We could, we could share it again with townships. Most, I would say most township supervisors, and there's some people on this call who have been supervisors, they probably know where their good resources are already, um, because there's gravel pits there, um, or nearby. But that's not always the case. And we communicate all the time with our townships. And so I will definitely make a note to share that again because per, Jeff Bertram's comment earlier, township boards rotate and they change. And so who was on the town board five years or 10 years ago, might not be on the board anymore. So I'll make a note and we'll take care of getting them notice of that information.
Thanks, Angie.
All right, well, thank you for the discussion on plating and, and subdivision. Unless there's any other comments or questions related to the subdivision ordinance or you have anything else for Ryan, Chad, or Jeff, we're going to move on to mining. Um, so you're all welcome to stay on, uh, or you can, if you want to head out and get on with your evening, we would understand that as well.
Angie, one last question on the opting out for townships. Um, if, if they go to the opt out option, does that mean they opt out on, on all parcels coming by them? All presentations coming by them? Or, or do they have just the ability to opt out and they'll, they'll see it and they'll just opt out?
So it, it would be, it would be the option of them saying, we don't want to see plats in our township, ever. Unless we change our mind and see them later. So we would, we would need to document so property owners and developers would know whether or not that would be requirement.
Okay, I'm just wondering, you know, that because, you know, they may be fine with it, except there could be an exception with maybe some controversial pieces that might be unique to that township. And they would then not have any knowledge of that development coming through. You know, it could be an environmental issue, uh, could be mining, could be a water resource, could be infrastructure, I don't know. And I'm just, I just don't want to have them left out and then them coming back and saying, why did you let this happen? So anyway, but if they opt out.
All right, any final thoughts or comments on the subdivision ordinance? Okay, so we're going to move on to, a good segue, Rich, um, from, from your question on mining is mining. Um, and Heidi Wenskowsky is gonna, is gonna do this presentation on mining. And there's no expectations that there's any changes tonight to the ordinance. If we roll through this and you're all happy with what we have, we're good. Um, but there's been some discussions at various planning commission meetings about, should we change this or should we change that? So this is an opportunity to have that discussion.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, so to get started, section 7.17 of ordinance 439 is what regulates mining operations in Stearns County. Um, and that includes mining of granite and mining and processing of various materials. Um, there's three permitting options in the ordinance currently. The interim use permit, which is what you're all familiar with, uh, administrative mining permit option and a pre-ordinance mining operation, which those are your grandfathered in gravel pits that existed prior to 2000. Just some background information, we currently have 121 grandfathered in pre-ordinance gravel pits. Um, the county had two different registration periods for these, so in 2004. And in 2011, um, there was letters sent out to landowners and townships to try to find all of these pre-ordinance gravel pits. And that resulted in 121 sites being registered. Uh, currently we have 18 active interim use permits. We've certainly issued far more interim use permits over the years, but there are 18 that are still active and not expired. Uh, we do have a handful of townships that do their own interim use permits for mining operations outside shoreline. So Avon, Collegeville, Fairhaven, Main Prairie, Munson, Painsville, and Sock Center. We don't see mining operations in those townships, so um, they take care of all of that. Um, and as far as complaints go, um, all I could find were six documented complaints related to mining operations since 2000. And all of them had been on pre-ordinance gravel pits. None of them were on gravel pits that received an interim use permit. So I thought that was interesting. Um, next slide, Angie. So the Shape Stearns reference, the nature pillar, um, goal four talks about protecting the aggregate resources and providing for reasonable economic use of aggregate. Um, and then there's a few policies that refer to the aggregate resources too. So we'll just get, hop into the kind of issues and concerns that we've heard over the last year or two when different applications have come up in the different discussion that the planning commission and county board. Um, the first one, expiration or duration of the IUP. So we've had a varied length of IUPs approved. So they varied from one month to 35 years, um, with 10 years being the most common uh length of time approved. And that's basically been decided based on what the applicants have requested and the public input that we've gotten during the public hearing process. So um, couple of options you guys have on that is to just continue with that current practice. See what the applicants request, see what comments we get at the public hearing and, and deciding on an expiration date at that. Um, or if there's, you know, a set limit, you for sure don't want to see anything longer than 10 years or 20 years or something like that, we could certainly write something into the ordinance for that. So that would be the first item for discussion tonight.
Hey Heidi, Jason Crow, and just a thought, um, based on the lack of issues that have come up with IUPs uh in the last 20 years, my, my suggestion would be to, to leave it as is. The, the challenge with putting a duration limit in, in my opinion, is that it can, it can negatively impact, it can have unintended consequences. You can have a, a really um good practiced mine, um, conscious as landowners and kind of in some cases have others um move into the area. Also, the, the dynamics of that area changes and it ends up putting kind of a, a crimp on what had been a, a well-run operation for many years. So that's my concern with, with putting a limit in place is that those dynamics can change. Um, and you, you have to kind of give precedence to those that were there operating first. So my two cents.
Thank you, those are good comments. Anyone else have any thoughts on that, just continuing as we have been?
Heidi, oh yeah, Sean here, um, I, I agree with Jason. It's, it seems to be working, you know, if it's, if it ain't broke, right?
Sure.
Heidi, Jason Wienerman here, quick question, what, what's the permit fee?
What, what's the permit fee for an application for an IUP?
IUPs are $550.
Okay.
Heidi, Commissioner Persky here, a couple of things. I, I don't mind the flexibility in that I, I think when there are issues that could be more restrictive. Again, and I've cited a number of times when we're talking about a wetland, we're talking about a creek, we're talking about a lake and the impact that it, that it has there. Also about the size, as far as how, how big they want to have their operation. I think that, that can make a difference. Also it, it could be that there's going to be a large transportation project and they only want it for a, a short amount of time perhaps, okay? And, and then to allow them to have it for, let's say, just that five years. If that's all it's going to take for that. And then after that, that would maybe appease any development or neighbors there that would say, you know, we don't want to live with this for 30 years. But I would have trouble extending them beyond 10 years if they're in an area that maybe has some environmental issues. So.
Heidi, I would, I would add to what Commissioner Persky just said, that we're seeing many of them for 10 years. And 10 years is a pretty long time. So things might change. And I'm not thinking about land use, but maybe some of the technology or some of the resource concerns might change in a 10-year period. But if we give somebody a 25, 30-year permit, we can't go back and amend that without just costs. So the reason I asked about the permit fee, $5.50 for a permit, do that every 10 years, it doesn't seem overly burdensome to me. So I would, my gut says cap them. But we could, as the planning commission, we could always choose to override the cap, correct?
Well, if it was written into the ordinance that said a maximum of 10 years, I think at that point it would likely be a variance if they wanted to go longer than 10 years without having to come back for a new interim use permit. Or we just leave the ordinance the way it's currently written and have it decided by the Planning Commission and County Board.
I, my, my, I, I would, I would lean towards the 10 years as opposed to leaving it open. That's just what my gut says.
Okay.
I agree.
Jeff Mergan, I would, I would lean toward leaving the way it is. Judge each one on an individual basis.
Heidi, Jeff Bertram, the interesting thing is if you look at the mining operations in the sites, it's like a lot of other things that we deal with. There's nothing in Eastern Stearns County. The bulk of them are in Jeff's district and Steve's district. Which of course we've seen the most controversial ones, the Rockville one comes to mind, where we'll have these mining operation applications come in and nobody will show up because of course it's in more, a more unpopulated area. And then when we start getting close to where the product is largely being used, it's getting trucked in from Jeff's and Steve's district. Then people show up because they don't want one, they want the tar roads and everything, but they don't want it in their area. That's where the controversy comes. So it's strictly based on population and most of them aren't sighted where the product actually is being used the most. So I'm not sure what effect it has either way.
Sure.
This is Angie. I'm just going to jump on in because the unique part of this discussion is that we, we, we likely do need the Planning Commission and the Board to give us some direction on, do you want to have a hearing to discuss this particular topic? Because if you do, then we can, we need to know that tonight. If you don't, then we may not even have a hearing on April 20th to consider changes, which is a bit different than some of the other topics we've had because we've assumed that we're going to need some changes based on some of the topics we've covered so far.
Angie, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you know, part of the ones in my area are more so on the, the ones that weren't required to get, you know, their grandfathered in. And then the other ones are those three by Albany, the between Albany and Avon that are right next to each other. But you know, it seems like that, you know, once they get going, they realize they're not there. You know, 365 days a year, they're only there at a stockpile and then they're gone. It seems like that even that one has quieted down. So I guess I'd be okay, you know, if we set it at 10 years as well.
This is Carol. I'd be okay with the 10 years as well.
Okay. Any other feedback on that? I think I've got a majority with 10-year limits from who I've heard from so far.
And I think we need to be clear here.
I would support 10 years.
By saying, but let's be clear here, by saying 10 years, that doesn't mean they shut down at 10 years. Because many of these pits are going to be run much longer, they just get extended. I don't think at 10 years, coming in and they put in for an extension, $500 is a load of gravel. You know, it, they, they, you know, they'll easily be able to make that up looking ahead for 10 more years. So the, the fee is not prohibitive. And it gives us a chance to see those that are good stewards, we let them continue on. Those that need to make changes that have been poor stewards, they either make the changes or they quit operations.
But is now what the 10 years is, then it's up again for discussion?
That's what I thought.
Right. It would be a 10-year expiration. So they would need to come back and apply if they want to continue. They would have to come back and apply before their 10-year expiration date to ask for another 10 years if they want to keep going.
So Joe, that would give the, the look at how they've been the stewardship, what kind of a neighbor. Which I think, I think, I mean, I think that gives part of what the concern I've heard you raise. I agree.
Heidi and Jason. Go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I, I mean, I, I hear everyone at the 10. I think there's, there's good reasons behind the 10 years. I'm just going to, seeing an example, and this was a conditional use permit. It's not exactly the same, but it's very similar. I, I saw a scenario in which there had been an aggregate mine in a location for a very long time. There was a population center that grew up around it. And all of a sudden now it became very difficult for the entity that had existed for a very long time to get re-permitted because all of a sudden now all these people that had moved into the area with the pre-existing condition there having concerns, and I think Commissioner Notch referenced it earlier. Sometimes these concerns are, are not necessarily warranted or valid either. They're, they're concerns about a variety of things, but they don't know the business either. And I just worry about that person that had property rights. They have a resource. All of a sudden having the dynamics change because you don't know who that board is going to be 10 years from now voting on it. And they might be influenced by some, some public comments and letters. And it's trying to protect the rights of the person that has that resource versus maybe quote unquote, the, the mob that comes in after the fact and then says they don't want it anymore. After it serves the benefit of, of creating their roads and, and everything else that surrounds them. So my sense, 10 years, I'm not going to get hung up on it, but just another way of looking at it at the individual level.
And then Heidi, as, as Angie talked about, Jeff brought up some really good points about the different perspectives of the public. And based upon what we've talked here today amongst the group of us, you know, it might make sense to have a public hearing to hear from the contractors, hear from people who are really concerned about this. And get some public input on what they think of the process.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good point. I know our, our plan, if, if it sounded like there was going to, you guys were maybe going to want some changes, we were going to reach out to the mining companies that, that have worked with Stearns County and give them a heads up and try to get some comments from them on the, on any potential changes.
Yeah. It seems like the issues I, I meant to. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve. I just want to say I would echo Jason Crowell's concerns there.
The, the thing I was going to say, it, that seems to, where I get calls on is the consistency of the hours of operation, things like that. Especially if they're pits that are close to each other and if, but they're operated by somebody else. I think that was a big concern on the ones by Albany and Avon. You know, to make sure if they can operate six days a week, five days a week, what the hours are. I mean, they're all different, like was mentioned before. If you're in a rural area where there's really not much population around, you know, then you buy what operating because there, you know, there's nobody there to disturb. But as you get closer to population areas, it seems to become more of an issue. And then the, you know, the miners get upset when one of them can stay open two hours longer than the other one and they're doing the same thing.
Right. That's a good point too, which we'll get into the next issue of days and hours of operation. So yeah, we kind of have a mix on the 10-year limit or not. So I think right now we do have a majority of people in favor of, of putting a 10-year limit in the ordinance. So we can propose that for the public hearing, a potential change for that. And then when, yeah, we can move on to days and hours of operation. So right now, our most restrictive permit that we've approved was 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Saturday. And the least restrictive was 24 hours a day. So that too has had a wide range of approved hours and days of operation. There are certain holidays we typically exclude and Sundays are typically excluded too. So again, the options are to continue as we currently do it with seeing what the applicant requests and seeing what public input we get and then deciding on the hours and operate, hours and days of operation based on that. Or if you want to put something in the ordinance that prohibits, you know, prohibits operations on Sundays and the holidays listed or limits how early they can start or how late they can end at. If, if you guys are interested in adding that to the ordinance or not.
Heidi, it's Sean. I got to say, I, I really, when it comes to this topic, we, we do have to take more of a, a case-by-case look at things. And, and it's kind of hard to find uniformity there. And that's what, well, you know, the 10 years is kind of, but when it comes to some of these other things, I think we do have to listen to the public. We do have to look at the neighborhood and the area. And we do have to look at, at the operation and what they're going to be doing and take into account roads and, and transport routes and, and all kinds of things like that. So case by case, I think is the right approach.
Commissioner Persky here. Sean, I agree with you. The hours of operation are, are important to, for getting projects done as well. And those ones that can operate for 24 hours, if, if that does not have a negative impact to the people around there and, and these contractors are trying to meet deadlines for the public interest, for public safety as far as getting road projects completed also within the construction season, I don't think we should try to restrict them just because we have it on the books. If it, if it's not having a negative impact on the neighbors, you know, let them have it. You know, I, I have no trouble with them being open on, or working on Sunday if they can put tar down on Sunday.
And Heidi, Jeff Bertram, I, I agree with that. With the, with the concerns we've heard, the three concerns we've heard over and over again is the early, late hours of operation and somewhat populated areas. Saturday afternoon, Sundays and holidays for those people that are affected by it. So if we leave it on a case-by-case basis, we can kind of filter that through and kind of address those issues if they are an issue. But certainly Saturday afternoon, Sundays, you know, are pushing it. I think if we, you know, require, if we just uniformly say that. I mean, I think we need to kind of take that all into account depending upon where, where people are. And these have varied from one extreme to the other. No input, no comment to hundreds of people in the room. So we got to be aware of that.
Heidi, Mike Pearl here. My input on that is the, the more flexible we can be on a project, like Jeff says, if we can run, the longer we can run a, a company in a, in a, in a pit on a project, the, the tighter he can bid a project and make the, the project cheaper for the public in the long run. So I say to be flexible is a, is a good thing, case-by-case basis.
Okay. Thank you. All good comments.
Thanks, Heidi.
All right. Okay. If there's no other thoughts on that, we'll just keep that one as is with just looking at what the applicant requests and hearing from the public for our days and hours of operation. The next one is setbacks. There hasn't been a lot of discussion on setbacks. So I list out what the current setbacks are listed in the ordinance. For the options, you know, no change to the setback requirements. The second one, this came from, there was another county that said they had this language. If two or more mining operations are contiguous to one another, the common boundary may be mined if the county board approves the respective restoration plans. We have had this come up in the past where I believe, I don't remember if they either applied for a variance from the property line setback or they did a joint application, the two companies and agreed to not, or to be able to mine up to the property line and not have that property line setback. So this is, and we've had people talk about it because we do have areas of the county where you've got multiple properties right next to each other that all have gravel pits. And then you end up with, you know, they have got the 30-foot setback from the property line that can't be mined. Well, that's good gravel. Why not mine through since there's mines on both sides? So that's what option number two is, is getting at to make those situations maybe be feasible or a little bit easier to approve those.
Jeff Mergan, that makes sense to me.
Same.
Makes sense to me. Makes sense to me. Would that go straight to the county board then? It wouldn't come to the planning commission?
It would still be an interim, you know, if they're applying for an interim use permit or something, that would still go through the planning commission. So you would see those requests and then ultimately approved by the county board. But yeah, those would still be seen by the planning commission.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
See, that, that sounds good. I like, and then just respective of the restoration plan, that's good language.
Yeah, I think that came from Murray County had that language in their standards. So. All right. Well, we'll go with that proposal. Transfer of ownership. I know this has come up recently too in discussion. So interim use permits right now, when an interim use permit, the property changes hand for any interim use permit, we don't review those permits. The permit runs with the land, so the permit just goes to the next landowner. There is the option to have the interim use permit reviewed or expire when the property. the interim use permit reviewed or expire when the property changes hands, the ownership changes. So the options with that would be no change to the current practice. So if a gravel pit sells, the land sells to a, a new company, that new company just takes over that interim use permit and keeps operating. Another option is to require an administrative review of the IUP. So that would be something like staff would go, will contact the new owner and go over the interim use permit, make sure they're aware of the conditions and the restoration plan and, and all of that, something staff would do. Or we can require that the interim use expires if the property changes hands and they need to come in and apply for a whole new permit. Those are kind of the three options that we see for, for ownership transfer.
Heidi, Jason Wienerman here. During my day job, when we do have contracts or active, or lands that change between landowners, we do want to see an amendment to make sure the new landowners are aware of the operational maintenance plan. I think it's just good business practice to have the middle option, the administrative review to ensure that the new landowners are aware of the conditional uses. I could see one company buying another one out and operating under their own permit without being aware there might be day and hour restrictions that are different.
Sure. That makes sense.
Yep, Mergen, I agree.
Persky, agree. At ten years, they'll be, they'll have to reapply at ten years.
Right.
How can I speak? I agree.
Be quiet. Sean, I, I actually, I, I think two or three are, are both, well, would be good choices.
Two makes the most sense to me. It really turns on what your philosophy is. Do these approvals go with the land? Or do these approvals go with the operator? I don't know a right answer, but keep that in mind.
Okay, well, I think we pretty much have a consensus to do an administrative review of the interim use permits when they transfer ownership of the property. So we'll move forward with that. Township road concerns. So we have several IUPs that are on township roads. And we've added, when the township has expressed concerns regarding maintenance of their road or damage to their road from the trucks hauling and whatnot, we've added a condition where it states a written agreement with the township which may include submission of a financial guarantee shall be submitted in regards to the maintenance of the road. And then no operations can occur prior to that agreement being in place. So we've added that when there's been concerns brought up by the township. So some permits have it, some permits don't have it. So that would be the choice. Is that something that we want to just automatically include on all IUPs that are on a township road? Or just keep it case by case, if a township is concerned about it, then we can add it. If they're not concerned about it, then we don't add it. That would be the decision for this one.
Well, Heidi, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with it, but the one that was in Crow Lake Township, I believe it was. I don't know if everybody's familiar with how this process works, but when, when an operation is activated, roads are used. And then at the end of it, if there is not an agreement between the contractor and the township, unbeknownst to me, Minnesota DOT comes in and then they're like the arbitrator. Well, in the case here, you've got the little township who feels that their roads were really beat up. It was a state highway project. Well, what do you think the state highway guy is gonna say about the operator? And the township, in my opinion, really got kind of put in a heck of a situation. So shockingly to me, nobody wanted to get involved to help the township out. So that's the only case that I'm aware of where this has happened, but I think, and, and then what's even more shocking than that is staff said, that's not our problem. Well, whenever we issue a permit, and not all staff, by the way, but whenever we issue a permit and we allow someone to do something, in my opinion, we're giving them the key to operate the cattle feedlot or to build the house or to operate the sand pit or asphalt. So when we're giving them the key to do that, I think we have a little bit of an obligation, one to try to be proactive to make sure there aren't issues. And then if there are issues to help, especially the little township like Crow River, Crow Lake Townships to help them resolve that. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but it was the only issue I've ever heard of over the years, but it was an unfortunate issue that ended up not too bad because some people got involved that really didn't need to get involved just to help a poor little township.
This is Angie. I'm just gonna jump in on that a little bit, Jeff, since you and I worked on that together. So just so everyone is clear, if this proposal would make it to the ordinance or if it just continues to be a case by case basis, this doesn't mean that the county is the arbitrator. The just, this just says that the condition would be, or the ordinance would say that you have to have an agreement. But it doesn't mean that we are the, the judge of that agreement. And so I just want to make sure that that's, there's no misunderstanding about what placing this in the ordinance would do.
And is the DOT, Angie, I'm not clear on that. Is the DOT always the arbitrator, quote unquote?
They're not. In the, in the case that you're referring to, it was a state road project. And so they had, the Department of Transportation had videoed the road and they had their own process to work on with the township because it was, in theory, the road was beat up because of the state road project. So that I would say almost never happens. It doesn't happen a lot. It's typically just a township road or, or a county road.
Thanks.
Heidi, this is Jason Wienerman, kind of referencing our earlier plat discussion where we were allowing townships the opportunity to opt out. I'd sort of lean with consistency here and allow townships the opportunity to opt in. If they are interested in having these signed agreements, they can express that and we can work with them. But I, I don't know if mandating them will get us any meaningful benefit.
Jason Cron, I, I echo Jason's thoughts.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments on that?
Yeah, this is Steve. I would agree with that as well.
This is Sean. I agree as well.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave it with our current practice and yeah, the township has concerns and we can add that condition. So it'll be again, determined by the public hearing process if that condition gets added or not. So the next one, financial guarantees, this was just discussed within probably the last six months or so. We, the financial guarantee amount, we did increase to thirty-five hundred dollars per acre for all mining operations. That went up from twenty-five hundred dollars per acre. So I don't really anticipate any change there since that was just recently discussed. Keep that the same. And then lighting, so lighting came up on the last interim use permit we had, there was a concern by a neighbor regarding lighting that came up. So I've got listed there what section seven point fifteen in our ordinance requires for lighting and glare. And the option is just to continue to apply section seven point seventeen when concerns are expressed or complaints are received regarding lighting. So that, that too would end up being a case by case basis. Any thoughts on either of those or?
Yeah, Heidi, Jason Crum, I, I like just leaving it as is on, on both fronts.
I go along with that. This is Rich.
Jeff, I agree.
Okay.
Sean agrees as well.
All right. That sounds good. Then we won't have any change to that. And then the last item that's, that came up, I think with the last IUP we had too, is property disputes, mainly property line disputes. So typically we don't get involved in disputes between landowners. We get involved if there's a violation of the ordinance, then we work with the landowner. But if it's something neighbors just aren't getting along, typically we don't get involved with that. So the option is to continue to ensure the IUP and the ordinance are in compliance. If compliance isn't achieved, then the IUP may be brought back to the planning commission and county board for revocation or to change conditions or whatever is needed in order to get that property into compliance if there's a zoning violation. If it's not a violation of the interim use permit or the ordinance, those are typically civil matters that are handled between the landowners. So yeah, we, we propose to just continue operating that way on those.
And the compliance, Heidi, would be Jeff Bertram, the height of the compliance would be if there's supposed to be a setback in there, who would determine if they're beyond that setback? The county then, or who would determine that?
Yeah, if there's a potential violation with the property line setback, for instance, if we can't determine it by staff going out there seeing survey pins in the ground, then we may require a surveyor to go out you know, have them survey it, show us that the edge of the pit is meeting that thirty foot property line setback. That is something we could require and that we can enforce. And then if it's not meeting it, then we can, you know, have them do reclamation and come into compliance with that. But if he's meeting it and the neighbor still isn't happy, that's something that would be between them, a civil issue.
The only one that I'm aware of is the one that was, we dealt with recently was the one by Melrose where it became more complicated because it was the county highway department that was in the pit. And so overall, there hasn't been issues, but ironically, in that case where there was a line, property line dispute, the county was the actual miner in the pit. So I guess I'd leave it the way it is and let it sort itself out, but sometimes unique situations like that, just like the one before can kind of complicate it a little bit.
It's tough to come up with a solution for every situation. So maybe there's wisdom in dealing with some of this stuff case by case. And one, one idea that I haven't explored, but I haven't heard anybody else bring it up either, either. Is there a role for a bond in some of these cases? For someone folks, folks bond that would be essentially something to draw on in the case of a violation. I don't want to explore it tonight, but might be some merit in checking this out in the future.
Yeah, that's a good thought that we can consider too. Anybody else have anything else regarding mining that they want to discuss or?
Just one other issue we've run into is dust control on, on the roads. That can present a problem. And so for those that would be problematic, you know, that issue has to be addressed. I think there were a couple pits where we had neighbors that were complaining about dust. And then we did have the requirement of watering or spraying the road. So that somehow that, that has to be included in the conditions if it's a potential issue.
Yeah, and that, that has been brought up on several in the past and we have added that dust control measures as a condition. It is in the ordinance too. But we have added that as conditions when there's, when the public has had concerns with that. Yep. Okay, well, that's all I have for mining then.
Thank you, Heidi. Great job. Thank you for taking this one and running with it. I think the group is probably tired of my voice. So but you get me for the next little bit to talk about some miscellaneous changes to the zoning code. And then you'll hear Heidi again when we recess and have our, our planning commission special hearing. So I'm gonna throw just random things at you. They were all in your packet and I'll give a brief explanation. Kind of tick off through these items. So those of you that were on the county board and the planning commission back when we did our last comprehensive plan and our last zoning ordinance update, right? Remember that we incorporated a concept into our ordinance in the egg districts called a building envelope? So there's a picture up here that shows what that looks like. It currently is limited to two acres in size. It has to have the home and accessory structures and the driveway. So what the department has been seeing over the last ten years, eleven years since it's been in the ordinance is it's very difficult to include the driveway in this building envelope. And I'm gonna show you some pictures about that. Secondly, related to this standard, we would ask that you consider not requiring the building envelope to apply on parcels that are currently it's, it's, it applies only to parcels that are less than ten acres if the parcels were created after two thousand and five. And our recommendation is not to apply the building envelope standard at all if it's a parcel less than ten acres. And the reason is because on ten acres, your building envelope just becomes a lot more defined. And so on ten acres, typically what we're seeing is the other eight acres probably aren't being farmed anyway. And so we've, we've been having a lot of frustrated property owners, I would say, about this change or about this current standard. So here's a couple of examples about, you know, how the, the two acre envelope was somewhere on here. The, they originally wanted to have their driveway come in, into the different location. And by the time you try to draw the two acres, it's, it's very hard to include the driveway and not go over the two acres. And so that is one of the suggestions we're making. And, and we're also hearing from farmers that do farm the land that, you know, having, having the driveway and Ken, you can weigh in on this or others, but they're not real concerned about, about the driveway location as, as much as obviously the building site because that's a permanent structure. Here's another example of why it's a challenge sometimes for the, the building envelope to include the two acres, you know, in this scenario, they wanted to build in the trees, which is good, not build in the farmland. You know, up in here, we had a wet one to work around. But if you have to include this whole driveway and panhandle and all of this down here, your two acres becomes much smaller. And so this is just a zoomed in picture of the same thing. So unless there's any questions or, or comments, I guess our recommendation just from property owner input, frustrations on trying to get permits for things, I think that I think we can still meet the goals of, of having the building envelope on parcels that are greater than ten acres if we don't include the driveway. So with that, unless there's any question or comments, we, we would propose that that be included in the public hearing.
Angie, this is Ken Moss.
I'm good with that.
This is Ken Moss, and I'd have to agree too, because this is kind of dumb. If you have a really long driveway, you is a a quarter of an acre of land or more on the driveway. And I never realized that that was all included. But yeah, sounds like that'd be a plan.
Jeff Mergen, I'm fine with that also.
Rich Blinkishure, I am also in favor of that.
Sean agrees as well.
Steve agrees.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. I think there's consensus that we'll include that in the draft for the public hearing on the twentieth. Next is another miscellaneous change related to accessory structures. And and I did not include it, at least on the screen, the whole list of accessory structure standards. But if you're in shoreline, the size of your structure is proportionate to the size of your lot. And that works well. It works well in shoreline. We we have a few variance requests to that standard, most of which are denied. They like to keep that line drawn. So this applies what I'm talking to you about tonight is is outside of shoreline. And what this refers to, and we're seeing a lot of would be building sites that are current, you know, existing building sites, farm sites, for example, that they want to sell off the farm site. And the land's going to be farmed to somebody else. And now we have too many accessory structures for the size of the lot. So outside of shoreline, the limit is five percent of the lot area. And I'm not going to do the math on this one we did at one point. But here's an example of this parcel exceeded the five percent of the lot area for accessory structures. And really, nothing was changing, right? All was changing was the property line. It wasn't more buildings going on. And so our proposal for a couple of different reasons would be to X basically not require that if the underlying zoning district is egg. So if you're in an egg district, you can have over five percent of the total lot area can be accessory structures, residential accessory structures, provided you still meet your twenty five percent lot coverage. So in essence, yes, there's a cap. The cap becomes larger. And this does not apply to farm buildings, or I should say feedlot buildings. So this would be residential accessory structures. So thoughts, questions on that? Otherwise, I have another accessory structure comment. The other option I would throw out on this particular one is, and this would be this would be, I'm sure, desired by many property owners in the county. And that would be to eliminate this altogether in all zoning districts, residential and egg. And then have your limit again be your twenty five percent. That this language would change a bit, basically would be deleting this whole section B instead of just including the exceptions for the egg district. So I'll just throw that out there as a little curve ball for you to to talk about.
Angie, Jason, Crohn, outside of shoreline or shoreline, I agree with getting rid of it. I guess I don't understand entirely the purpose of it. In the first place, I guess I at a high level I do, but I think getting rid of it is more flexibility is good.
Jason, on that, would you would you recommend eliminating it all together outside of shoreline regardless of the zoning district? Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't clarify. Yeah, I didn't do a good job of that. Sorry.
Angie, this is Ken Mossman. If we did this, that makes some of the people who are asking for so they can build a big enough accessory building on, they would be able to buy less acres and still build their big building on, right? Or would that not change anything?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I mean, we haven't seen. Yes, we we've seen that that happened a lot, especially in situations like this, because then they had to sell more land with the building site than what they really wanted to be. Yes. Yes.
Hey, Chris.
Hi.
I could say that the the reason behind had the argument about keeping it in your residential districts and and not keeping it in your egg is keeping it in your residential districts. Do you want to limit the the amount of accessory buildings people have in terms of view or you know, other other thoughts on that, I guess, would be welcome? Or do we hear from the public on it and throw out getting it rid of altogether? Or do you want to just see a proposal to remove it in the egg districts?
Angie, this is Sean. I I kind of like the idea of removing it, but but that whole point about these people putting up some of these ginormous buildings in some of these residential areas with their their toys and their boats and and et cetera in them, it just seems incongruous. It would be not in harmony, I think.
Sean, the only the only argument against that is that they could build a ginormous house as long as it's less than twenty five percent and it would be the same. That would be allowed. It's just it's being an accessory structure. I think limiting at twenty five percent at least at least prevents a little bit of what you're getting at.
Yes, Jason, but some of these people buy two acres in a residential area. And if we limit them to twenty five percent, like Sean says, they can build a pretty giant building on two acres. And if they're in a residential area, we still got to kind of limit them a little bit, I think.
I don't know. I I would just have shed envy.
This Steve, I'd be okay with getting rid of it as long as you got the twenty five percent lot coverage limit anyway.
Jeff Mergen, I'd agree with Steve.
Angie, back up. The the present is five percent. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. So the proposal, Commissioner Persky, would be basically twenty five, you know, twenty five percent. But you also have to count that they have buildings or driveways and other impervious slot coverage, or I should say a home. So the proposal would be to, I think that the department would would strongly support removing it in the egg districts for the reasons that I started with saying. And then if you wanted to consider removing it in the residential districts, that would be going one step farther. And one of the other reasons I'll I'll just chime in and then we can we can move on or just say thumbs up, let's ask the public and propose to get rid of it. But what we're seeing a lot of is is the showers, right? Out in the egg area, so people are buying, you know, they're they're buying properties and that may be zone residential. The underlying zoning is residential, it's maybe R ten or R twenty or R five, and they want to build a shells. So they want to live in a little bit of it, and then they want to have their shed as the as the big part of it. So we're going to get into that next, not to confuse you, but accessory structures just seem to be the hot topic lately. So we we would support having the hearing to at least remove it in the egg districts. And unless I hear some strong support for removing in the residential districts as well, we will just move on.
Jeff Mergen, I think five percent is really restricted. That's just my thought.
So Commissioner Mergen, you would support removing it in all zoning districts? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I would. I think five percent is overly restricted.
Okay, well, why don't why don't we move on? I think what we'll do for purposes of the public hearing is there's no harm in noticing it or removing it in all zoning districts. We might get some input from townships too, right? Or or other organizations that that feel strongly one way or another. So I think we'll include it for purposes of further discussion. Okay, so next is what I was I kind of was leading us into. And that is related to the shouts situation. So the the ordinance currently doesn't allow the shed portion to be bigger than the house portion. And that it currently is in all all zoning districts. And so we are proposing that when the underlying zoning district is egg again, that we don't care, basically. You can have a huge building as your shed and you can have a little part of it be your house. This is a recent floor plan that came to us. These come to us all the time. And then we need to work with the property owner on making this bigger, red bigger, or making this unhighlighted part smaller. And again, when you're in the egg districts, probably not as big of an issue. So I'll pause and see if there's any comments or questions.
So Angie, Jeff Bertram, showers are allowed in any egg district, A forty, A eighty, A one sixty?
Correct. They're allowed in residential as well.
But but they're allowed in agricultural. Even if it's A forty or A eighty or A one sixty?
Exactly. Yep, they're they're allowed. It's just that the the house portion can't be any smaller than the shed portion. That's what causes problems.
So the so the living quarters or the showers, the house part of it has to be as big as a garage?
Currently, that's the way the ordinance is written. Yes.
Well, isn't the whole purpose of a shells typically to have living quarters smaller than the shed? Or am I missing something?
I I think that's what we're seeing. I think we're definitely seeing that trend. And that's why we're bringing it to the to the group to discuss. So at a minimum, we would recommend that you, again, you excluded in that restriction in the egg areas. If you want to consider excluding it in the residential districts, we could do that as well here and propose that for public hearing.
Well, I think we should allow it to be smaller than the shed unit. I I again, to give the flexibility. That wouldn't prevent them from having it bigger, would it?
No, it would not.
Well, I would give the flexibility then. So unless I'm missing something, I think giving it the flexibility of having it smaller or bigger would make more sense.
And Jeff, just to comment on that, would would you suggest that in all zoning districts or just in the agricultural zoning districts?
Personally, in the agricultural districts, you know, residential again is a whole different caveat. You don't want to have a huge shed with a small living quarters potentially in the living in a residential area, I think. I think you'd create some conflict there.
This is Sean. I want to agree with everything Jeff said there.
What's better, what's worse? A large shed that property owner keeps all their stuff in? Or a smaller shed with some of their stuff outside? Just a rhetorical question. I don't have a preference on that, but because I don't I don't personally live in a more rural area. But what's your take on it as you drive around?
The rural area, Lee, I don't think is a problem. I mean, either one of those wouldn't be a bad a bad scenario. Either way, the residential area, having a big shed might be a problem, would be my only. But in a rural area, I don't think it matters.
This is Mike Pearl. I agree with Jeff and I like I would like to see a little more flexibility like in in shoreline. Let's say somebody wants a second residence and and have a shouts so that they can have all their toys and the house all in one. It's more more affordable. That's my view.
Angie, this is Ken Mossman now. Go ahead, Jason.
Oh, sorry, Ken. Go ahead. I was waiting for you.
Oh, what I was gonna say is now this residential is the residential area within the county. This is not residential like within cities, right? Because like in our city of St. August, we do not allow showers. But this would just affect the residential within the county. And I think I could live with either way that way, because you're kind of you might be five miles out of town on your R ten lot or whatever. And then what would be the difference, right?
Yeah, Ken, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's kind of where I was going with it as well. And you know what? If there's major issues, the township then can create their own standards, in my opinion, if if they don't want to allow it. But to Lee's point earlier, there's going to be a hundred opinions on that. Let let the the local proximity surrounding the area make that decision. So my two cents, I agree with you, Ken.
Okay, so I I hear I think I hear general consensus that we should propose it to be to add what's included in red, but keep the restriction in the residential districts. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Angie, I think Ken and I were saying no restriction in the residential area.
Got it. Okay, so so given given that we have a few members that that have that conversation, I think what we could do is we'll notice we can notice it the same as as the five percent as potentially prohibiting eliminating it in in all zoning districts. And we can have that further discussion at the public hearing, if that sounds okay.
Angie, Commissioner Persky, for sure, I would be in favor of getting rid of the restriction in the ag area. For sure.
Okay, good. Thank you. This is just another example. So I'm going to buy by that one. So a few of the the last ordinance related changes, some very minute miscellaneous changes is we are proposing an outdoor storage. Currently, as you see number B, outdoor storage areas shall meet the setback requirements. There's been a lot of desire from some townships to to eliminate that requirement. Basically, is there an issue with outdoor storage being right on the property line, provided you know where the property line is? And I think there's some there's some sense to that. Instead of having your property line and then you have your setback of your fence off the property line, there's desire to to use that whole area of somebody's property for outdoor storage. And then secondly, a minor tweak to the vacation home rental provision is referencing the Stearns County Ordinance number two oh four, which is the lodging ordinance. And Heidi and Jen will have to help me with this one because I I struggle with explaining this one real well. But unless there's unless there's any questions on the outdoor storage, I think we would propose that change. And Heidi or Jen, if you can help me out with B, jump in what that would mean. Thank you.
Yeah, for B, currently, the ordinance says you get in a vacation rental, two people per bedroom plus an additional two. Well, when the when you look at the lodging ordinance, some bedrooms are so small, they can only have one. Some bedrooms are large enough, they could have three. So our thought here was to just go with what the lodging ordinance allows and not limit it to two per bedroom. So if the lodging ordinance says it's big enough for three people, then we would say three people. But still capping it at twelve persons total is what the proposal is.
Thank you, Jen, for that. I wrote that down this time. Any other questions or comments on either of these changes?
Jason, we didn't hear that. Both seem good to me.
Jason.
Angie, Sean Blackburn. I'm sorry, I wanted to go back for a little clarification on the first B. Are we talking about allowing people to build right up to their property lines? And we're not taking into account like runoff, water off of eaves, things like that?
Sure. So good question, Sean. What this relates to is the outdoor storage area. So it would be their their area that might they might store equipment, storage. And so it would not include the property line. The property line setbacks for the building would remain the same based on the zoning district. So this would just apply to open, basically their open yard area that they're storing their equipment.
All right.
Would there be a barrier of any kind, like, let's say, a fence along that property line with this storage?
Yep. So Rich, if you look at number Yep. So Rich, if you look at number F, outdoor storage areas shall be fenced and screened from roadways. And so there is a potential, though, and Jen and Heidi can correct me if I'm wrong, that if it's not along the roadway or if it's not along an adjacent land, well, yeah, I need some help, Jen and Heidi, on that. So do all outdoor storage areas need to be fenced?
Typically, yeah, all sides are required to be fenced and screened from adjacent land uses. So yeah, neighboring properties, we've required that.
Yeah, screen screening is correct. I don't know that it technically says fenced. It could just be vegetative screening. Yes, we've seen in some instances where property owners question, I've got a twenty foot setback from my property line. So do I put my screening on the line and have twenty feet of dead space before I can store stuff? Is that, what sense does that make if my fence is on my property line? Why do I have to have ten or twenty feet off my line with my storage? That's just an example of something that's come up.
Another question, does the county allow hard surfacing to be applied to the property edge? Property line, that is allowable. Okay, that same thing we have in the city here.
Any other questions or comments on these two sections?
Angie, Commissioner Persky here. See, Angie, the limit at twelve persons, you know, I I just think in my own family experience, I remember being at a a cabin up on by Walker and we had three or four families in there. And we probably exceeded twelve persons. I mean, there there could be, could it not be appropriate for one of these places to exceed twelve people? If you included, I mean, small children too?
I would.
I mean, if the if the building is large enough, I don't want to take away from opportunities for families to gather together in one building that could actually accommodate them.
Right, that would be a change. We could propose that change. We would just need to know what number, what number, if any, I guess, would would you be wanting to limit it to? At some point, it will be limited by the number of bedrooms, as Jennifer was explaining.
Exactly. And and that's what I'm wondering, but limited by the number of bedrooms. And and actually, you know, you could have somewhat of a little, you know, you could have bunk beds and a bed in one of those rooms as well. Just working, again, family with kids. So I I don't know if the twelve is necessary because if you use the ordinance by the number of bedrooms, the number of bedrooms would limit the number of people in the structure. I don't know if anybody else has got comments about that or not.
Not necessarily, because you could have three sets of bunk beds in each bedroom. And you'd have four bedrooms. You know, you could actually have quite a few people in a house. I I don't, in my opinion, we shouldn't get too far in the weeds on that.
I I agree with that. And I just want to point out that this is one of those things that's kind of a complaint driven thing. And and you know, how often is somebody going to make a complaint about too many people? And I mean, unless it's seriously overboard. It would be complaints would be more, I would think, about about vehicles, about noise and hours and stuff like that.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe the complaints may be less in the case that Joe, you brought up than the case of, for lack of a better term, a party weekend that has certain number of people who are allowed and kind of trash the place or are bugging the neighbors. We certainly don't want to get in to try and figure out which kind of party, you know, group is running the place.
So thoughts on on changing that or or limiting that or leaving it the same?
Angie, I think Commissioner Persky, I think Commissioner Persky should invite us all up for one of his weekends and we should test this out and see how out of control it can get. And then we could come back and be more knowledgeable.
I'll second that.
That's fine, Jeff. If I get to do the guest list.
How many places have we had that are requesting more than twelve?
Well, we haven't, I know we haven't had anybody request a variance from that number. Jennifer and Heidi might be able to anecdotally say that they've had people ask for, you know, say that they would like more, but that they were limited.
That's what I'm kind of wondering.
Yeah, do you guys have any thoughts on that, Heidi?
Yeah, Angie, Commissioner Clark, I haven't had that come up. But it's because right off the bat, we tell them twelve is the max. And I haven't had anybody complain about that number, unless Heidi has heard anything.
I don't think I have. I mean, I don't think we see much more than a five bedroom home. So twelve seems to be sufficient most of the time.
But now, this is Ken Mossman. Now, if we start allowing according to bedroom size, you actually could put more than two people in a bedroom. And if you had a five bedroom home, my brother just came up because he said they rented a place two weeks ago with five bedrooms. And if you got big bedrooms and they'd allow, they were big enough for three people in a room, all of a sudden, you'd be up to sixteen, seventeen people that would be allowable in this huge house.
So Ken, I think that's, so what's your thought on the on the cap then? And the changes proposed would allow some flexibility, but would still have a maximum of twelve people. So do you think twelve is sufficient? Or do you think we should change the number or get rid of the number?
If you're going to change the adding more than two people per bedroom, then you're going to have to allow, see how big the bedrooms are and allow according to each house individually.
Only only if we get rid of the part that says you have a cap of twelve people.
Right.
Right now, it would allow, like, let's say if there was a three bedroom that were big enough, you could get up to twelve people. But if you had a five bedroom, you still wouldn't have more than twelve people.
Because otherwise, you could have thirty people that come and want to stay in this place. And they say, well, we'll find a place to sleep. And that you couldn't allow.
Commissioner Clark, to your question, I I would be for removing the maximum of twelve and let it be governed by the subsurface sewage treatment system and the the bedroom limit. I mean, there's other things that can govern it. Why put an arbitrary max?
And I actually was just asking the question because I I, in general, I would say, in general, feel like, think that twelve is arbitrary. And so would agree. And the subsurface surface sewage treatment actually could be much more limited than some people might think, right? So I, we might even have to just explaining about what that means. I was also thinking about how hard the last couple ones did that only were asking for six people. And how hard it was with their neighbors. So I think we all know that we're still going to run into some of it. But I I agree with you. I think I think to your point, we just need to make sure that people understand what the what the sewer treatment system means in that case.
And then what if we happen to be on a lake that has their own, are hooked up to a city sewer? So they have, don't have to worry about subsurface sewage. Would it be, would we allow more people then or what?
You know, Ken, the ones that I'm thinking of are all incorporated. Yeah, I don't know that we have.
Pretty much so, because like you're thinking, like in the city of Rockville, around Grand Lake, they have their sewer system, but that's an incorporated, it's in within the city. And there's probably none in the county.
I don't believe so.
This is Jen. I think that's correct. The only thing that might be a little different is, for example, on the Clearwater Harbor system, that's a community system. It's not municipal, but it's a community system. And we would have to probably find out what that particular home is allocated for, for their flow. I think if, we haven't had any requests for vacation rentals in that area. But that would be something we'd have to look at, what their flow is that they're allowed or what they're designed for, I guess.
So maybe there'd be some guidance. I mean, I think in general, Jason, I literally was just asking the question because I was curious about what people think. I do think the way it is drafted both gives flexibility, but does have a limitation both in terms of either the building or 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 the sewage treatment system has. So I think, as I'm thinking through it, having to process it, I think I'd be okay with that. That makes some sense.
So we, what I'm hearing is I think we can notice that as as removing the cap of twelve. I would be curious, you know, Shelley now has to talk about who we're all going to notify of some of these changes. I would be curious if we notified the neighbors to vacation home rentals of of that removal of the cap. I I think I know what we would hear. I I'm not sure, but we'll we'll have to think about how to how to do that in terms of.
That's my my question from, or my statement about the last couple that we did permit because people were concerned about pretty small number. So it it'll be interesting to to hear what people have to say.
This is Jeff Mergan. Angie, you're still going to use the formula, though, for bedrooms. I mean, if so, if you've got a two bedroom camp, cabin, they're going to, how many people are they going to be restricted to? If they're small bedrooms, they'll be restricted to four people. Would that not be true?
It's six because you get two per bedroom plus two.
Okay.
We we can sure notice it. Yes, Jeff.
Doesn't sound like there's been a problem here. So I guess I would vote to leave it the same.
We we could sure leave it the same. The other thing we could do is if we start seeing or or hearing from vacation home rental prospects that, you know, that that this is limiting or they would like more. Or if we start seeing a variance request, we could come back to the group and have that conversation. That would be the other alternative.
Absolutely. Jesus, Karen.
Okay, that's Lee's cue to move on.
Please.
Although I don't think it's your cue to move on, Lee. I don't know which way you you think we should be going or that you don't care. I mean, I don't mean that in a bad way, but it's just, are you meaning just move on or do you actually have an opinion? Unfortunately, I can't hear anything you're saying, and I'm sure it's brilliant.
Am I on?
Yes, now you are.
Okay, Lee, we did not hear you, but you're not muted. So if you talk, we will hear your voice.
Oh, okay. My thought process, I hate to repeat this, this is the third time I'm thinking is consistent with Jeff Mergan.
I have to admit, I hadn't heard that for the third time. So I appreciate your having said that because that was your definitely, let's move on. And I couldn't tell what it was. So thank you.
So I have two commissioners that would like to leave it the cap alone at twelve and one that Mr. Persky is interested in removing it. Again, that's more of a county board.
We can leave it as is. And then, yeah, if they want to apply for a variance, if they've got a big enough place, we could grant that to them.
Okay, I think we'll leave it alone and just go to Leech Lake to be on your vacation home rental if you have more than twelve people. No, I'm just kidding.
You're going to Leech Lake, yeah.
Stay here, stay here.
Can we put that in the ordinance?
Right, no.
You don't like it going to Leech Lake.
We'll promote tourism here. Okay. So last but not least, findings of fact, and I know some of the planning commission members had been talking about this over the years, they get their long. I don't want to put words in everyone's mouth. I think that they're long. I think that some of the questions don't apply to every situation. So I just want to share with you what I've put together and researched a little bit. So what the law requires is one through four on your screen. What the courts say is basically as long as you have, as long as there are legally sufficient reasons that the county is not arbitrary, right? We've always heard that. The decision is factual. And typically, local governments are entitled to great deference. So so land use decisions are typically not overturned unless it's a very arbitrary decision. So what that means is I think we we have some room to be flexible with our findings of fact. And and I would also like to applaud the planning commission and the board. We've had very few lawsuits over the years that you both do a very excellent job on on your findings. So that won't change with this form. But what I'm proposing this to look like would be one through four, as required by law, would be asked in every application. And number five would kind of be a checkbox situation. So you only answer it if it's applicable. And I don't need to give you all the the examples because you have them in your head already when you would maybe talk about water quality or when you talk about roads. So what that would do is that would take your current form, the planning commission sees this form, the county board typically doesn't. That would take the form and basically keep the red boxes are your your questions that we have to ask. And it would basically turn it into something like this. So upon further review of the ordinance, we don't actually have to change anything in the ordinance in order to make this change. All we have to do is change the form. And so thumbs up, thumbs down, we can try it next month. If you like it, great. If not, we can tweak it. It's not dependent on the ordinance. Thoughts, questions?
Angie, this is Sean. I like it.
Angie, I definitely, it was the chair, and I have to read all fourteen questions and have a hard time getting people to respond. I think it covers everything that we're trying to get to and fewer questions and pertinent questions. The one that drove us all nuts is number five, has information been provided regarding the impact to property values? We've never gotten that. We're kind of told not to even consider it. And yet it was part of the findings of fact. So I think this, again, this is great, move the process along, get to the meat of the issue. I think it's worth trying.
I like it, Angie. This is Jason Cronin. I like it as well. The one thing I'd add, and this doesn't have it, I don't know that it should. But one of the things that comes up, I noticed it in the Board of Adjustment, one of the fact finding questions is what's the intent of the official controls? And I think that's always a relevant question is what is the purpose of the ordinance in the first place? And does this application come in conflict with that purpose? Because there's a lot of times it it may not. So neither here nor there, but potentially, if there's anything to be added to this, because I like the shortened list, it might be that question because I think it's always relevant.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments on the findings? Okay, and last but I think not least, Mr. Persky brought this up at a at a meeting before. And so I think it was related to Cozy Corners. What's the legal notification requirement? I have it listed here. By law, we're required to do what's what's on your screen. For very, for CUPs, it's a quarter mile rezonings, it's a half mile, cities within two miles, townships, of course, and then two newspapers, the one of general circulation and then in that area. And then the official newspaper, which is currently the Quail Spring Record. So if the county, if the planning commission and county board felt like you wanted to provide more mailed notification to property owners adjacent to a CUP, IUP or rezoning, you would have to change the ordinance. And so the other thing that I would I would note is we currently have over nine thousand subscribers to the planning commission and eight thousand to the Board of Adjustment. So one of the ideas and goals of Shape Stearns and the county's mission and goals is, you know, provide more information to more people. And we've been doing postings on meetings on demand for probably twelve years now. Many of you are signed up, so you know how often you get it. I would just keep that in mind when you're deciding, do you want to provide more mailed notification per the state statute? Or do we continue to promote and and encourage use of of the email notification? I will pause and see if there's any questions or comments on that.
Angie, Jason Crone, I'm good with what you have here yet. I would just encourage us to keep looking for ways to communicate outside of the newspaper notice. I think that's becoming increasingly irrelevant. So if we can find other relevant ways to communicate, and I don't have an answer for it, I'm just saying, we do need to keep this stuff visible to the public, and I don't know that the newspaper has the effect it used to.
I would say the weekly is more so than the daily. And I agree overall.
Well, if we think of it, we do it in the paper of record. It's not likely we're going to get it out papers, right? So I agree with.
Okay.
Mr. Persky, any, any comments? I think.
Yeah, my concern was with things that have a more of an impact, perhaps negative to the neighborhood. And I'll cite, yeah, we've got Cozy Corner, we've got the shooting range, we've got Milk and Honey, we've got gravel pits. And it's just that, as far as the immediate neighbors at a quarter mile, that's, that's pretty limited in that, that music travels more than a quarter of a mile. The, the impact of that gravel pit and the shooting range would go more than a quarter mile as well. It's just, I thought maybe doubling the distance for those things that are, have such an impact would maybe make sense. I had had some complaints about the people that weren't contacted in a couple of those incidents.
So Joe, I, I don't disagree with you, but how would we, what's a way that we would define that? Like, it's not always obvious what is going to prompt that. I mean, cozy maybe, but I mean, so, I mean, would we require it to be in every case, or?
Commissioner Clark, I, then I'll answer that from the zoning administrator's standpoint. Yes, we, we would have to do it in all cases because we wouldn't be the judge of that.
Yeah, we can't, we don't have a way to just, I, I wasn't really meaning it fully rhetorically, but I think it's really hard for us to define circumstances in which it would be a broader one. So we almost that have, whatever we put in is what we have to do for everything.
Angie, typically, how many notices are we sending out at a quarter mile?
Well, that can vary greatly, Commissioner Persky. I think we have a requirement that we have to notify at least 10 people, but sometimes there's hundreds, you know, on, on the chain of lakes, or I would just say it can range greatly, from 10 to hundreds. So the, the question would be, do you want to hold a public, do you want to include as a public hearing potential change to increase the property owner notification to a half a mile for conditional use permits and IUPs? That would be the question, I believe.
In, in my opinion, I think it's fine, we don't, I don't think we get that many the way it is now, where, you know, they're complaining they're not getting noticed. At least I'm not hearing it.
This is Ken Mossman. Steve, I don't think we're getting that many complaints.
I was thinking about some of the alter, going back to Jason Crone's point earlier, some of the ultimate kinds of ways that we're getting the word out through lake associations where applicable, or the township, you know, I mean, as long as we're, we're getting it to a few other key places where somebody we might have missed, that might be more meaningful even.
Okay, I mean, we can leave it as is, but yeah, and use those other avenues. It's just that, you know, as long as people know what's going on, that's a good thing.
Okay, again, all these things we can, we can revisit in the future if it comes up again. Last but not least, this was, would conclude the portion of the ordinance review committee of the planning commission and the county board. Our next meeting, as I indicated earlier, is April 26th at 3:30 PM. We are going to have further conversation on recreational vehicles on individual lots. On the county board, did have a public hearing on that, as many of you know. I did include a couple of weeks ago to you, and we will include again, all of the public comments, all of the survey results, the proposal that we reviewed last time. And this won't be a public hearing on April 26th. It will be a meeting that is open to the public via meetings on demand, WebEx. But the public hearing would be held at the county board on June 1st. So we're going to continue that discussion with, with the group. I think what the board would like to know is based on what they heard at the public hearing, what does the planning commission think? We got to put our heads together and come up with some, some ideas. And then last but not least would be recreational vehicle parks. Obviously, no surprise, we went through Cozy Corners, and we do have a couple of other RV parks coming up, which are expansion, which is a good thing. If there's anything we want changed, I think specifically related to docks is what we're focusing on, because we didn't hear back from anybody on any other issues. So you'll get that packet in a couple of weeks. So with that, I think the county commissioners for, for joining us, I will have to ask the commissioners to drop off, because our next meeting is with the planning commission, and we did not notice the county commissioners attending this meeting for purposes of a public hearing on an asphalt plant. So you all, you will hear that at your next board meeting.
I'm gone.
Have a good rest of the year, and thank you, everybody.